January. Good afternoon, I'm now going to call the Wednesday, January fifteenth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to Order. On Wednesday, March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of Twenty Twenty Three, an act making appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty three, which included a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty first, twenty twenty five. Welcome, everyone, and thank you. Join me in saluting the flag.
Pledge the Statute of Statute of the United States of America. It's you, the Republic for which you stand, one nation under our individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting to order, I'm going to call the role Commissioner State.
I am present, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
And Commissioner Shea is present. Number three is executive session, we have no plans for executive session today. Number four minutes. I'm looking for a motion to approve the open session minutes, January eighth, twenty twenty five.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the meeting minutes of January eighth as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Hi.
It is a vote. Number five appointments, we have none. Number six, public comment. Every week. The Norfolk County Commission's agenda includes an issue, a subject section for public comment from anyone in the public who wants to have any comment at all, either in person or on the Zoom. So now is the time, if there's anyone on the Zoom that has any public comment. Director Cronin, have you had anybody notify you for public comment?
No, sir.
No, sir. Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we have no public comment. Number seven, whole business. I have none. Number eight, personnel matters, personnel matters for consideration. We have, believe we have one at the agricultural school.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner State.
Yes, sir. Through you to the Norfolk County Agricultural High School, I move the notice of contention employment of Jane Ingle of Cumberland Island as a long-term substitute. At the rate stated, an effective date is one sixteen twenty five, so moved.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Hi.
It is a vote. Number nine, payroll and expense warrants.
Chairman, warrant list for one fifteen, you just have two items. First, I'll move approval of item twenty five dash twenty eight payroll of the county, the amount of one hundred fifty one thousand, two hundred seventy-two dollars, six cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Hi.
It is a vote next.
And the other item is item zero one zero three twenty five. The expenses of the county, I move approval of eight hundred seventy-nine thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars, thirty-eight cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Hi. That is it, Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Number ten, fiscal twenty-six budget production update. Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, very briefly, the commissioners, as they know, we released a budget development guideline memo a week ago. Since then, the schools contacted us to request that their scheduled date of February nineteenth be moved, as it aligns with some planned meetings the commissioners will have with trustees. The schools would like the trustees to have a vote on what comes before the commissioners first. So if it's okay with you, I just want to confirm, I will move the Agricultural High School from February nineteenth to March first, excuse me, March fifth, which is your third meeting. And I'll move the information technology up to February nineteenth. We swap it. Okay, no problem with that.
Any questions?
John said he's.
John, you're all set?
John, that's sufficient.
Okay.
John, why?
Yes.
Yes.
Quick question, is the final date, when's the final vote, was it March twenty-sixth? That was the final vote that we vote?
Yes.
Yeah, we're good on that. Okay, good, good, okay. All right, good. Excellent.
Okay, let me see.
We need to make a motion to amend the guideline?
No.
Okay.
So much for the
All right.
Budget twenty-six production update. Item number eleven, discussion of use of disaster recovery room at six fourteen High Street, Dedham, Mass. Commissioners, you'll see a memorandum dated today in your file.
Yep.
Relative to
Good.
repurposing a room on the first floor which is presently used for disaster recovery for registered deeds. I reviewed this document, it goes back. Be, I think we first notified our parties on October twenty-fifth of our need for some additional space. I'm going to turn this meeting over to Director Cronin for a brief explanation. There's a lot of backup here, there's been a lot of back and forth. And some work done, but I think we're ready to go. You know. This is a fluid operation, so we can probably work this out. We are in charge of space, we need a lot of space. I'm going to have John briefly explain it. Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Briefly then, commissioners, I'm requesting your approval to repurpose the first floor disaster recovery room located here in Dedham. The proposal would be to relocate this space to the Agricultural High School. The R C I O, Sam Evans, has worked with not just the registry, but also the Agricultural High School to identify a location that is suitable in terms of size, location, access for ADA compliance and so forth. And I'm happy to report that he has found a room on the second level of the cafeteria building that is virtually the same size as the existing disaster recovery space. So with your approval, we will relocate the infrastructure, which is basically tables, chairs, and PC infrastructure down to the Aggie. Work with Horizon to activate the lines and move the disaster space there. Once that relocation is completed, we'll repurpose the room on the first floor to a high-density file storage location. The packet shows the current condition of at least one of the locations. It's not desirable, it's not terribly accessible. The fact that our critical records are spread around various locations, which are not monitored or secured, gives me great concern. Moving them here to six fourteen High Street is a priority, it's a critical priority. It'll be placed in a room that will have much better HVAC controls and access. And speaking of access, both our procurement and our HR professionals will have better access into the space to retrieve and manage files as we do throughout the year. Speaking of file storage, this space on the second floor of six fourteen is at capacity in terms of record storage with both these units. And if you've been in Michelle's office, you can see it's wall-to-wall. Secure cabinets, her doors locked at night. And our procurement department doesn't have sufficient files to keep anything other than one fiscal year of documents on site. So this will dramatically increase the efficiency and access to these files. We believe it's the right thing to do at this time. So today I'm asking for your approval to repurpose this area and then turn it over to our C I O to activate the space at the Agricultural High School. Thank you.
Question. Commissioner.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As always, you mentioned in the memo, and I understand the idea of moving it off-site for safety in terms of disaster. That does make sense in a way, not to have it so close, have an alternate site does make sense.
Sure.
But there was also mention of utilization of the so-called Blue House, which shamefully is something I just realized, I would love to get a tour of, get a look at, it's one of our buildings. I know that the maintenance people use, I've known that, you know, anybody, but I'd like to get a look inside. And there was some discussion that possibly right, that could perhaps be an alternate use for the registry as well as an alternate use. So I'd be excited to hear a little bit of that discussion as well, if that's possible, in this discussion here. We are, he's losing an area, we're, well, we're not really losing it, we're putting it over to the Aggie.
Correct.
Right, but Register O'Donnell, who just joined our meeting, had mentioned in his memo or something to you, said as an alternate area to meet with people. Is the Blue House, maybe we could set up a room to allow the registry to have a small area there? Does that make sense?
Well, I think it's a good question, I I'm not opposed to it, I mean, we don't have that in front of us.
Okay, I thought we did, I'm sorry.
You know, are we talking about locating the satellite office there, or locating our disaster recovery office?
No, I, well, my own feeling was, on registry feedback, I definitely he can speak for himself, but I thought it makes sense to get it far away on the registry, I think that does make sense. The disaster, like they say, you don't want to have two things so close with one another, you want to put it in a faraway area. So putting the disaster recovery at the Aggie makes sense. But I thought utilization of the Blue House maybe as a corollary is that something that could be used, maybe to look at, maybe to look at.
Yes.
For, I don't know what the word is, not, what did you say, not?
Repurposing, re-space, I'm not opposed to it, but
Okay, that's all I was saying.
It's, it's in much better shape than it was three or four years ago, just because
Yeah.
we've gotten our arms around this, we operate under a disposition schedule published by Secretary of State, everyone, all public entities are supposed to. It's, it's revealing. You'd be surprised what's a permanent record and what isn't. And you know. I don't want to open that door, but if I do, you'll notice that since just this last summer, we had a terrific young capable intern who got into that office, into that space, and went through all of that space. And we cleaned it out. We destroyed some stuff only that the state allowed us to, to get permission, write a letter to the secretary. The rest has to be, you know, it's permanent record. And we've got records everywhere, we try. You know, I've spoken of taking all of the minutes for a number of years, maybe in excess of fifteen years, that are in loose-leaf books, we're going to bind them, they're permanent records, et cetera, et cetera. And if someone walks away with all those books, or rips a page out of it, it's gone. So all of this is prompting us to need more space, I don't think it's a you know, I don't think it's a hard to understand, it's just change comes hard, and no one likes to be changes. I think it's fine, I mean, the space of the school is fine, maybe we can do something additional, but I don't have that in front of us, we don't have that in front of us.
I'm lacking the word that you had, you nailed it. It's not disaster, but the use of the Blue House, or the Blue Building, the Blue House could be utilized by several entities in the county, and perhaps a portion could be given to the registry. I don't know what the word.
Manus uses it now. Someone's in the other, I know Joe, the cop, and there has some stuff in there.
Right.
John, go ahead, John.
I'm hoping that, through to you, Chairman, to the question from Commissioner Stady, if the registered deeds has a desire to expand space and utilize Dedham-based space for operational purposes. That's beyond the scope of this particular article, first of all, I mean, item on the agenda, we're here to talk about a disaster recovery room. If the register has additional operational slash satellite office space needs, I would recommend that you direct him to detail what the purpose and use would be, the frequency, the access needs and so forth. And then we could possibly make a, make space available through the Blue House or some other space. But I think it would be who, if the commissioners to request in writing, what the intended use would be rather than imagining.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
All right. I thought he had done that in the registry feedback, part of the memo too, but I may have missed it. I can read it pretty quickly.
All right, that's fine.
But at least we're open to the idea. So, yeah, the idea, so far going to move it, I kind of think it makes sense for safety. It does make sense for safety to do that. And then we're open for the idea of utilization of the Blue House or Blue Building.
Okay, there's a bunch of pictures in here, there's all the correspondence that were received. Register's letter of December third, and then some other issues relative to it. I noticed some articles in the the Franklin Town Hall, the Portland, the Franklin Pride. A couple of other local access groups have picked up the register's comments dated Saturday, November thirtieth, in one, and then another opinion written here in December thirteen. You know, in the medium outwound, which one, this one? It's the second one. Okay. Next.
Did you want to have any comments about that?
Sure.
I was also going to request.
We go over this as well.
Okay, that's, that's our purpose today. Registered, do you have any comment?
Well, certainly on the agenda, it said discussion, I came over here, people looking for solutions to have discussion. Sounds like the vote's already going to be made.
It has not been made, I know it hasn't been made.
I hope not, but it sounds like, once again, County Director Cronin's opinions.
Please, don't, are you going to talk about the subject now?
Well, I came over here to, to kind of present solutions, because I thought it was supposed to be discussion. I was wondering if I could get a copy of that memo that you have in front of me?
That'll be made available to you following the meeting.
Be nice to have a before meeting, so I could be.
I'm presenting it to the commissioners, thank you, sir.
Sure, well, you know, thanks to the registry.
I do not, I don't work for the registry, I work for the county commissioner.
Well, I'm just asking, if it's possible.
All right, that's your question, registered.
You, you, you know, once again, there's a reason there was a disaster recovery office in Dedham. You know, Dedham is the Shire town. There are state laws that require the registry to be in the Shire town. And again, it was a good policy decision, Peter, when you made the decision over fifteen years ago to put it down there. Joe, you were around, it's been there since, you know, you've been around since twenty fifteen for ten years, and Commissioner Stady, you know, since twenty twenty-one, so it's been there. And actually, you know, with all due respect, the county director Cronin, who likes to, you know, do things that affect the registry, he wasn't around during COVID, when that office was used and kept us open and operational every workday during COVID. And we were one of the few registries out of the twenty-one that can say that, that we were open and operational every workday. Because we had a disaster recovery, we could send employees, we have the union shop. They were agreeable, it's close by, and it was there, it's accessible, it's in Dedham. And I'm not averse, again, we were never involved in any of these discussions. And I would think if you were registered Commissioner State, or you Commissioner Collins, or even you Commissioner Shea, that you'd want to have discussions. And this, this was in the works for nineteen months without one discussion with the registry. So if we're talking about space, the alternative space down there, and again, you're saying close by. Let's, let's go talk to the Dedham Fire Department, you know. With all due respect, I know what's happening in California, but I think the Dedham Fire Department, who has put down fires in, in, in and around this, would say that it's highly unlikely that a fire that's, say, down at the registry is going to come here. And again, the reason you're moving it or supposedly moving it is it's on two different grids. The registry's electrical grid goes out, you know, on Bridge Street out that way, and this is on the downtown grid. So we're on separate electrical grids, and I think the chances of if there was something happening in Superior Court, or, or, you know, the registry that are fired there is going to affect down there. So when this, when I had a talk with Sam, when he came, and it was all in the works here, I said, is there anything that prevents us from having two? If you want to put another, I'm not averse to, you know, if you want to put another disaster recovery office, but this affects registry operations. I'm not averse to having one in Walpole, if that's what you want. But I, I don't like the fact that, you know, you walk in, you know, it says registry deeds, it's being scraped off the door as we speak down there today.
That's a lie.
Go ahead, Reg.
Well, the point is that it just seems like this decision's already made, and, 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 and I, I want to I, I just think if we're going to be collaborative, and I hear that word a lot, then here's some solutions. There's a room over at the registry, over in the registry, it's your IT room. It's actually bigger than the computer, it's bigger than, than the disaster recovery office. You could, you could use that room to, to store, as I understand it, you could store your high level of, you know, cabinets and things. I just can't believe that. And again, you have needs, and I, I'm willing to discuss them, I'm not trying to tell you where to put your paperwork. But at the same time, I hope you respect, I, I'd like to keep the disaster recovery office here in Dedham. And if you want to do one in Walpole, that's great too, I'm not saying no to that. There are file cabinets in the plan room that, that can be used for storage. Again, you mentioned this Blue House, there's a room in the Blue House. So, you know, I, I just heard the county director say, you know, look, we have our operations at the registry, I'm not going to go through this bureaucratic why I need something at the Blue House, if you want, put the storage of records over in the Blue House of, of your records. But the disaster recovery office here in the, you know, the county seat is important, but also since seventeen ninety-three, the registry's been in Dedham. People come to Dedham, we are intertwined with the courthouses, many times, and two of your attorneys, there are writs of attachment, there are releases of executions where people walk it from the Superior Court or the District Court over to the registry. And again, that's why we need to, you know, I, I think there's a a link between what we do, we're a quasi-legal agency with the court system, and that's another reason to keep us close by the court system. Again, hopefully, we never need it. When, when we, we started this, I mean, as I said, Commissioner Collins was around, so over fifteen years ago, we never thought there'd be a pandemic, and it gets used, and we have used it. And the turnaround time to get this up is a lot quicker than what's being, what was quoted before. So our turnaround time getting the disaster recovery office up in Dedham open and operational, certainly the quicker it gets done, the better it is, you know, for operations. So to me, it's important to have a disaster recovery office in Dedham, there's two fault lines, we've addressed that, so yes, is it ideal to have them that close? Probably not, but the fact is, many registries didn't even have a disaster recovery office. We've had people from other registries come, you people have been, and it's been in cooperation with the county commissioners. We've been at the forefront of disaster recovery, and it's for the registry. So this is directly affecting, in, in my judgment, registry operations, so and again, I don't know when Walpole would, would get up and running. I, 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 maybe we could all go out and look at the space and, and see what it is, I'm not averse to it. And, and I don't like being painted in a position of having to come over and argue all the time. But if I have to, because, you know, County Director Cronin, just take steps that interfere with registry. Well, Peter, though, you know, I, every time I come over here, a vote's being taken, it said on the agenda, discussion. You know, we just, you know. County Director Cronin, I mean, doesn't even notify, Sam said it was being up for discussion, so I'm coming over to discuss. But when you listen out back there, it didn't sound like discussion. You know, and, and again, I'm not averse to what you're saying, and I'm not averse to, you know, I get it, if you have storage issues, but to prioritize storage issues over keeping the registry open and operational, whatever disaster, and again, as I said, we didn't know a pandemic was taking place, and this, this is one of the reasons we would open and operational. Uh, you know, I don't, I'll help facilitate solutions, I've given you some examples of where there's alternate places to store your documents. You know, and, and there's nothing wrong with storing your documents offsite in case this place burns down, so, you know.
Commissioner.
We, yes. To the register, Peter explained, you mentioned during the pandemic that that place was utilized, and it helped keep your registry open, no one's dealt the efficiency of your workers, I know firsthand, the registry was kept open during the pandemic, and everybody did a great job there. Are you trying to say that that room was also utilized to service people during the pandemic? I'm not quite following.
It's, it was part of it, to stay open and, and operational.
How, how was it worth, worth?
Because we had people over here.
In that room?
Take, yes. Some of the, some, and again, again, you know, I'm, I guess we'll assume that the union people will just go to Walpole, that that's not a change of work conditions. But yes, there were employees, and it was part of the strategy of keeping people separate, we didn't know, we didn't know back then. So the people that, that worked in that office did not, did not come to our to the site, you know, remember when the whole idea of someone got infected or exposed, they would have to quarantine for a couple of weeks, so yes, there were, there were people, that that office was open and operational. And again, if there was another type of this, you know, business continuity planning, it is close by, it gets up and running operationally.
Would you characterize it then, it served maybe as an alternate service location? Service.
Well, that's what a disaster, you know, disaster recovery site is, and believe me, it, it poses challenges, so I'm not averse to exploring Walpole, you know, it'd be nice to kind of in the loop, but let's go down and take, take a look at it and all that, but notwithstanding Walpole, and, and again, when I had the meeting with Sam, Sam said there was no you know, technological reason why you couldn't have two sites. I'll, I'll leave that you know, to you, I just, I just place a value on the Dedham side. And, and again, to come over here and hear there's going to be a vote on it, I mean, you know, you know, I mean, all due respect, Commissioner Collins, it just sounded like the vote was taken no matter what I say, which is probably, you know, it's, it's disheartening. You know, but if solutions are looked for, I'm trying to offer a solution and be reasonable in my approach. But, you know, I mean, the disaster recovery office, I mean, why you have it is disasters take place. You know, and one time we, you know, had a fire, and, you know, we got up, running, you came by, Commissioner Stady, then we were up and operational on a Monday, because it happened on a Saturday, you know, but that's what it's there for, I mean, the registry collects documents, it's a quasi-legal agency, and, and it does collect revenues, I know. It collects, and, and I, I know that's why it's been supported in the past, so there's a, a business and operational reason, reason why that should stay open. And, and I, I don't see why it has to be one or the other, the way it's being portrayed by County Director Cronin.
Right. Go ahead, John.
Very briefly, apologies to Register O'Donnell, that stated it was a lie. The instructions to the painting staff who were renovating the front lobby were not to touch that door. I was just informed that a member of facilities began to remove the lettering and was told not to. As you can see in the image, the first name of William P. O'Donnell was removed, the rest of it was not, it'll be restored.
It's not about the name, it's about the, the place, and it's about
No, you made a statement that actions were taken in anticipation of meeting, I'm explaining that it's inadvertent, it's to be restored, apologies, thank you.
If this was truly discussion-oriented, there should even have been the need for destructions, instructions on the name of the door, which is minor, in my point of view. It, it's just proven a point, if, if the thing was on for discussion, then let's have a discussion, but it just seems like it was a done deal.
Registered, I'm looking at some memos, including our original notification for you, when this came up. And then there's a long, there's some pictures, then there's a long letter. I'm, I'm sorry, is it Sam? A C I O director has on October, through Friday, October twenty-fifth, a memo to you from him, very lengthy about this whole process and about the proposed move to Walpole, which is on our own property at the Agricultural School, along with some other pictures of the current satellite office. Schematic, it says this, the lizard lounge, that's the proposed place at, at, at the school, correct? That's the term, the lizard lounge?
That's a copill.
Okay, I understand, it's not a legal term, but it's, is a drop of that space, and it says lizard lounge. Then there's a couple other pictures of, I think this is the Blue House, I've been to the Blue House. And then a letter from you dated, to Sam dated, this copies to us. I mean, I think this is a fair amount of discussion and some back and forth. This is no surprise that we've been trying to identify some area to make some changes. If you want to throw the blue house in there to take a look at it, I'm not opposed to it, but as of now, it's not in front of us.
You're closing the disaster recovery office here in Dedham. Are you saying put the disaster recovery office in the blue room? I, I have said the blue house?
No, not necessarily. But what, what, how does the blue house come up with?
I didn't bring it up. You know, the blue house that I brought up was this room in the blue house to store your records. There's a, there's a room, I believe, on the second floor in that house that could be stored. There's a room next to the, in the annex, next to the break room at the registry, an old IT room that's actually bigger than the room downstairs.
You gave us that picture today, right?
Yes. You know, so.
Who's in there now? Or what's in there now?
It looks like, well, I'm hit it, but you know.
Is it someone's office?
It was, was it Mark McDonald's office and now it's no longer there?
It's the IT, IT work office where they store computers that are being deployed, repair, repair equipment that is under repair. Position things that are being disposed of tonight. It's an active IT workspace.
But it could be used to storage of documents. Also, there are this space, there's this file cabinet set at the county, the counties that are like thirteen or fourteen empty in the plan room. So that's where the blue room came up, Mr. Chair. That's why I was asking. As far as plenty of discussion, I think, I think what happened that you mentioned October twenty-fifth, I had sent a note, you know, Sam had dropped something off saying that, you know, that this was going to be discussed the following Wednesday. And it was, you know, somewhat, you know, disconcerting, the statement that it had been worked on for nineteen months. And and that there was going to be a vote the following Wednesday on October thirtieth. So we got dropped off on a Friday. I sent an email that Saturday to Sam, just, you know, like, how do you know there's going to be a vote and things like that? And then, then there was the breach on October twenty-seventh, your IT breach, which I'm sure put this thing off as well. So, so when you say a lot of discussion, I, you know, we, I did have an opportunity to meet with Sam since October. And and again, my takeaway is you could have, there's no reason not to have two satellite offices. But I, I do think having one in Dedham meets the operational and functional needs of the registry. But when you say October, I guess my argument is leading up to October, there was no discussion. And we got a notice on a Friday evening at four o'clock that this was going to be put on for a vote on October thirtieth. And, you know, and at least I had hoped today, when I saw the agenda, it said discussion, I was hoping it'd be discussion.
Isn't that what we're having?
I hope so. Yeah. We have a discussion.
Yeah. Well, I got, I got a question. That's the sort of thing. Where in any of these documents from this office? Does it say that the disaster recovery office will be permanently closed? I noticed you highlighted that in your letter.
The disaster recovery office in Dedham.
Permanently closed. Where does it say that? Why are we having a discussion?
If you give me a copy of your memo, I'll take.
No, it's your, no, no, you want to get a copy. It's yours.
But, Mr. Chair, that's what you're doing. You're, you're close. There's no reason to close the Dedham disaster recovery office. First of all, there are laws in place. The registry has always been in Dedham since seventeen ninety-three. There is a reason for that. And so if you're, you know, moving it to, there's no need to close it. That's my point. You could keep it open and if you want to explore Walpole, do the Walpole one.
We're talking about relocation. We're never talking about closure.
And you're closing the Dedham disaster recovery office. I mean, I don't want to get into semantics, but it seems like you want to.
It says permanent.
Well, the Dedham disaster, there's a disaster recovery office and it's been there for over fifteen years, long before County Director Cronin came to town and it's worked well.
All right, maybe that's true. But you know something, in those fifteen years, I don't think anybody in this office, and I'm responsible too, most recently, Richard even less than I, but did we look at our space needs? Do you have any indication when you were chairman of this, what, did you look at the space needs? Did you consult the Secretary of State's permanent records law and how, and what has to be kept?
I think we always looked at the laws. I know Commissioner Collins was on and Commissioner Gillis, we, we always tried to.
You didn't notice any, that gee, we got to start taking better care of our records.
Store, you know, times change. I get that.
That's right.
Times change. But, you know, you make it like that we're averse to change. The reason we have a disaster recovery office is we were one of the first registries in Massachusetts to have it.
Talking about our records, I realize.
But but you try to portray that anytime I come over here, I'm resistant to change. I'm not resistant to change. In fact, you know, the commissioners embrace change. That's why we have a disaster recovery office in Dedham that's needed, that's.
And there's further change, too, because we got a shortage of proper space to store our records. That's what drives this bus, not your disaster recovery law, because we're not going to close it. We're going to relocate it and we want to work with you and make it stronger, but we don't want to. And we're all here, or actually, it was very, very, well, wasn't it? We were all here for COVID and I'm aware of what was going on at the time. I'm also aware that, you know, the registry stayed open in a certain way, not to the public, but, you know, transactions, everything was being taken care of, which is.
It was open to the public.
It should be. That's great.
It was so people, but you remember they had to come to the door, but people, it was.
But I don't think to move the disaster recovery office from this building to another building, whether it be in Walpole or somewhere else, is a major deal. And that's what this is all about. And I mean.
To your point, if I may, and I've always, always commended you, your lawyer skills and advocating for positions is, is very strong. And your editorial, which is your right to write in the newspaper, basically does say permanent closure. It doesn't say a solution or an alternate location or relocation, which we would always, you know, and we were discussing or at least envisioning. Okay, so to Mr. Chairman Shay's point, it's a little bit of a misleading. They put articles in the paper and say we're closing it.
You can say what you want, but it's not misleading. So respectfully, just take, take your vote. And once again, it's another interference in the registry operations.
I thought it was a vote today. Perhaps there's no vote today, which we have a discussion. I know Director Cronin, Director Cronin presented something. And what I said on the same idea, since it was in the memo, was some utilization of the blue house. Like, but I guess that can't be talked about today and maybe that'll be something we'll look at later, but.
Oh, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not adverse to looking at the blues, but some portions of this. But I still think we need the downstairs here. And that's my position. And we're not going to permanently close disaster recovery. I'm not going to remove anything that's presently being kept. If it takes an hour or two or a day to move it, maybe that's the only closure you're going to see, but nothing else. Never been our intention not to have that.
But the intention should be for us as commissioners, I would think, to frame it. It's just number one, if we are going to vote to relocate that, is that fundamentally the right move for a variety of reasons? Number two, is there a substitute that's suitable? Number three, is there also some alternative areas we can both investigate for additional space? I think we've got that. I think we have that, you know, I mean, I think there's, there's room for compromise. I think if we had the blue house used in some part under registry, if there was anything where people couldn't be in his building, they go to that building and service people. It's not that distance is almost the same idea. Either across the street or you're in the back of the parking lot. If he needs something, I am open to letting the registry deeds utilize some of that building. I think that's almost almost fair based on what you're saying with COVID. You don't know what's our next pandemic convey. They may need a space outside of their building. I don't know. But as far as safety, I do believe an off-site location does make sense. I think the location of the Aggie or someplace else does make sense. So.
Well, I, let me ask somebody another question and I can't, I looked at Sam's memo. How did we end up at the Aggie? How do we identify?
Sam approached Superintendent, you know, CIO for the schools to identify any potential space that was available. Generally, the same size as, at this purpose.
Okay.
They had extension meetings and discussions. And on site, just from a technological standpoint to see how a right-sized solution could be found. And I have to compliment Superintendent Martin, he's highly qualified.
Okay. No, I know the space because it's near the library and I, you know.
You've been to the lizard lounge?
Huh?
You've been to the lizard lounge?
Yes, I have. I didn't know it was a lizard lounge. I mean, I, it doesn't matter. It's before school meetings. I've been up there a couple of times. It all, it's all been around the mail. It looks like it.
One last.
Go ahead.
If I could, Commissioners, the, the notion of a disaster recovery space emerged after the fact events of September eleventh, two thousand and one. Former Governor Romney commissioned a team of individuals to come up with what was known as continued operation plans, coop plans, in continuation of government plans, cog plans. I happen to know this because I worked on these when I was with the Department of State Police. Governor Romney's executive order was updated by Governor Patrick. It is now Executive Order four nine zero for your notes register. That particular executive order describes how disaster recovery plans ought to be conceived and from a state perspective. So it's binding to executive branch, not us, but we take guidance from it. And the notion that a disaster recovery space should be operated at a distance from your primary locations. Let me give you an example. As you probably travel down Route nine, you'll see the Department of State Police headquarters right next to the MEVA headquarters. In the state police coop plan, they are to relocate to Maynard in the event that there's a problem in that space and they can no longer use that location. They're not, they're not going to the bunker next door. They're all going to remote areas. MEVA goes to Westboro. So the intention, as you correctly pointed out, Commissioner Stacey, is to also always look at disaster recovery as an area where your government and your operations can reassemble and function. So in addition to using this space for disaster recovery, as, as we've discussed today, our intentions from a technology perspective is to allow the continuation of county government to also function. So if there were an event that took out this block, which I think is more likely than not, rather than just one or two buildings, we would locate government to that space. So there would be a place for the commissioners to meet, the register to carry out his duties and so forth. So it's, it's, it's in the spirit of Executive Order four ninety that this, this, this concept is, is, is being developed at the location in the Aggie. So I just wanted to breathe some life into where it emanated from and what the concept is. And that's Sam's job. He's, he's in charge of the entire campus information technology, not just the registry, you know.
And that's why I commend the commissioners and the directors at the time, because while you were writing things, we were putting things in place to at least have a place to stay open and operational. And that's, we did. No problems looking at Walpole. I still think you need one in Dedham based on the law and based on accessibility there. Since seventeen ninety-three, people have been coming to Dedham and it's here for a reason. There are laws relative to where registry operations take place, but enough isn't, you know, it's been.
Okay. No comment. Yeah. Commissioner Collins.
Yeah, so the history of what had happened here in this building, and Bill knows as well, is that the, the office space downstairs used to be for the individual who ran the advisory board. And that was the advisory board office for a good long time. And then that person actually became the county director at some point. And that office was not used. And so I remember when Bill came to us and said, how about using that space for the registry? It seemed like a good idea, but we were always concerned that it was closed. We, everyone was concerned. The registry was closed, was concerned. We were concerned. You know, what if, you know, it's, it's a good long way to, for a fire over there to hit over here, but you watch what happened in California, get some big winds and, you know, whole neighborhoods are being wiped out. So that, that helps us to better understand our concern because it could happen, right? So as further background, for the county, and we never acted upon it, but we, but we did talk with the school well before your time, John, at the school. But we talked to other past superintendents about continuity of government at the school. Because it's really, the county doesn't have that many buildings. We have the building in Quincy for the golf course. And then we have the, the Aggie, which has many different buildings, but that was the only place that really had room. So we had talked about that being the next step for continuity of government, of government, which would be, which would be the county commissioner's office and all the county functions, but that would also include the registry. We kind of like banged it around, but we never really took it to fruition. And this isn't, this, from my understanding of what I've read and what we've talked about with, with HR, too, just over time, is that we need space in this building, just as the registers need, needed quite a bit of space in the registry building. It keeps on expanding because he has to print the books. So it makes sense that we would need additional space for these records. And we would need space that was highly protected for security reasons. And this building is already very secure because you have a secure passcode to get in. That office can be locked, the downstairs office can be locked. And it makes sense that the personnel records in this building would make sense in a safe environment. I know the blue, blue house is also safe, but not probably as safe as this building. Yeah. So seeing all these, these different issues, I understand the register's concerns. He wants to keep it close by and makes it easy. I get that. But for disaster relief, it would appear to be a better spot in Walpole, which you acknowledge, which is great. But to have two satellite places, I'm not sure if there's a need for that. That, that's my opinion. And with the space crunch needs right now, I mean, we need, we need that space down, we need space somewhere now. And if that space is downstairs, that's great. If, if at some point the blue house is of interest to the register as a second backup, that makes sense, too. But that's actually closer to the registry, the blue house, isn't it? I think it's, yeah, so it's.
Probably closer than this is.
Yeah, it's closer than this. I mean, that, that's, that's also vulnerable to, to, if the registry, for whatever reason, can't work, that house is closer to being not working because it's closer. So I, I really understand your concerns and I, I get it. But it makes sense that it goes to the, to the school. And I, I understand change is hard and, and nobody likes change and it makes it more interesting. But it does make much more sense to have it, the backup in Walpole. And then if you look at other counties, Bristol has two registered, is it two or three registered entities they have, registered entities?
Three.
Three, yeah. So they're three. So, so they, they spread it around. It's not just in one spot. So, so yes, we have one in Dedham, but we could have a backup in Walpole. So that seems to make sense. So I don't have a problem with utilizing the, the space downstairs for HR. It makes sense. And at the same time, if the registry wants another backup, I'm happy to work with the register on another backup.
I agree. That's well put. That's what I was trying to say.
But I mean, you know, everyone here cares about the county and, and, and they really do. And I appreciate the passion behind all of it, but we just want to do the best that we can for our constituents. I get that.
So the plan, the proposed plan by Director Cronin is to utilize that room there for storage of records of HR?
HR procurement, registry files, yep.
Right.
This is part of, again, the total review, using the, the disposition schedule of Secretary Gill. I mean, you know, I say cleaning that up, but you, you remember, you remember what was in there.
Yeah.
You just opened it and stuff jumped out. A lot of it was permanent record. I don't know, other than Phil, who gave some assistance, had anyone had any idea what was in there. So we're slowly getting to it because it takes time, it takes money. And it's part of an overall review of everything. And I think it's better utilization of our space. So thank God we have the school. And it's, you know, far enough away, so there was a difference. I mean, you always hear at campaign time, what a satellite office in Quincy always comes up. But, you know, it's, this is, I think this is different. This isn't serving the public, so to speak, other than it would keep us alive in an emergency. And I guess that's serving the public. The public would not report to this place, except during an emergency. And I, you know, God forbid, we, you don't know what an emergency is until you have one. The thought of, you know, looking at, even in the basement of that building as it exists now. The thought of, you know, looking at, even in the basement of that building as it exists now, it's kind of, sometimes it's pretty scary. Look at the wiring and stuff, and these pictures are very current. Uh, you know, spools of wire rolled up. I don't know if the register, maybe he took this picture today. Over in the corner, you see all this, you know, I don't like to, to bear I wonder even, and I know how old that building is. Uh, and this, you know, stuff piled on top of everything else. Human nature. Uh, what, this, what is this room there? I just, can you see what that room is?
I never got that report, so I don't.
Do you want me to get it today?
I.
Don't take that one, my notes are, but you'll get one.
Then I know I'll, if I take it, I know I'll get one.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, that's, well, that's not the IT room, that's the, yeah, the plan room. Or the storage in the plan.
So those records are ours and some of them are yours too? No?
Yeah, on the, on the other side. Well, I think the county has the, on the wall and then we have one near the microfilm area. And then uh, there's some, we have some storage as you come into the plan room thing.
I mean, my, my hope is that all this will be attacked at one time and, and, and try to put it, put it in order as best we can. And uh it's long overdue, and I think the identification of the space downstairs is, 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 is primary to our argument. And uh
How big is the, uh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How big is the lizard, the so-called lizard lounge that we're proposing to be the new spot?
Approximately two hundred and ten square feet.
And what's the pressing capacity of the other one downstairs?
Two hundred and fifteen square feet.
So it's about a trade-off?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And this has a, a bathroom and a kitchen and a conference room?
Downstairs?
The Aggie space.
Cause I've never been in, I mean, I've looked in a little nasty, but I've greeted some of the people that call, I never, I never went in there.
And so dedicated for the Aggie. I mean, for the county, the Registry of Deeds.
For the county.
For the county.
Including the Registry of Deeds, yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Commissioners.
I'd like to take a look at the Blue House and the room downstairs. If we could, before we vote this next week, if we wanna put an agenda for a vote next week.
You mean?
Just want to.
Look at the Blue House for the disaster recovery room or for just general record keeping?
Just for like, either general records or again, alternate service location, unless you, unless the registry has no interest in it at all. I mean, I'm looking at that as a possible place.
Interest, I, I just. I always have interest working.
Just want, I just want to explore that option, if we could.
Uh, yes, I, I, I'm not opposed to it, but I want to be specific. I want to come back and next week and say, well, that's not really.
No, no. So I want, I want a firsthand look at what that room looks like downstairs. I mean, go by it, we've seen it. Why don't you take a look at it? Now, I want to look at the Blue House. Just to get an idea of conceptually, what, what are some things we could do there? Maybe, maybe not disaster recovery, maybe as, again, an alternate place to put people for service in the public for our registry. I mean, we are a service industry. We want to satisfy our customers. If that's the part that he could utilize to help out, if something came about, maybe that might be something we could, you know, take a look at. Not as in disaster recovery. I think this, I think, I stand by what I said. Disaster recovery in a location makes sense. Really does. Registers even said that. The Aggie, the Walpole, Walpole location makes sense. Try to look at something else, so.
Do you think we can have an accurate assessment of the Blue House by next week?
Uh, oh, absolutely. We can walk over there after this meeting if you'd like to. Um, it's perfectly accessible. But I'm opening, my open question is, the Blue House presents a future option. Um, I, I would respectfully ask for a vote today to address the disaster recovery repurposing, which is the point of the memo. With respect to what is potentially available for registry uh use uh of county space, I think we should look at the Blue House and every other corner of county-owned space for whatever purpose the register then turns to you in request and writing um for use of. So if that's the Blue House or the basement of the registry and other spaces, I think overall, you should have a thorough view of what's going on. But I want to be clear, the repurposing of the space downstairs to move it to Walpole is before you today. And it seems separate from the interested of, the interest of the register to explore a second piece of property, piece of location. They are separate.
Okay. Do you want to put anything in, do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
I will, in a second. I will. I'm not trying to be argumentative, Mr. Chairman. Trying to think of how best to perceive. Uh, if we make the, the Aggie becomes the disaster relief location, the room downstairs becomes what? What do we call that room? The records room?
Record retention, well, a record room, yeah.
Right. If, God forbid, there ever was a disaster of some sort.
On our records?
Well, no.
We're all in big trouble.
Is the way that. The way that room is going to be configured, could there be some sharing if needed by the registry? If something came up, if in, in event of a disaster.
It's, it's not, it's not that big a room. It's about this big.
Well, that's why I wanted to see it. I mean, I've been able to visualize. You know, like this room here?
Yeah, it's about this.
About this big here?
My attention is to install registry house, which are high-density storage shelving.
It's about the same length, right?
That consume.
So it's gonna be pretty much all full of shelving and?
Yes.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be high-density shelving.
So it couldn't be used in case of an emergency?
No, it's storage.
Okay. That's why I go back to, again, and maybe as a backup, 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 there should be some other location. And if we have to have something, maybe this, you can carve out a spot in the Blue House, the Blue Room, wherever it's, the Blue Lounge, and carve out some for the register as well to have as a backup. So I'm saying. You know, it's um.
Right, and I, and I agree with you in, in terms of your concept, but those are two different ideas. You've got disaster recovery.
Right.
And as the registrar is suggesting, then there's the uh operational need of keeping a secondary Dedham space. I don't see those things as, they are mutually exclusive. So if you desire to provide additional space for the registry, wherever that is,
Yeah.
first, I think the registry needs to define what is the, what is that space going to be used for? How many FTEs, what kind of infrastructure, technology, so forth? And then we can figure out where's the best solution to find that space, if we have it.
Could, can I just mention one thing if, if?
Yes.
Um, originally, when Sam brought this to our attention, it seemed like a dedicated space at the Aggie. It seems like during this discussion, it is morphed into something else. I mean, the way we have it set up downstairs is we can, on a moment's notice, flip a switch and start operating. Um, and the discussions with Sam were more involved. He said, well, we could move the equipment out on carts in the lizard lounge. I mean, is this ready for us to operate? We are the only registry in the state that tests disaster recovery. We do a full disaster and a simulation and switch servers. I mean, is this ready to go? We can occupy, we can buy furniture for it, ready for its intended purpose? Or is it just, in the event, we can pull things out of closets? I mean, it's two differentish.
Um, the, the space of the Aggie will be activated once Verizon provides a line, separate line for the county to use with the exact same equipment that is downstairs.
Ready to go.
Ready to go.
Okay.
And the room downstairs will not be decommissioned until that new room is available.
Okay.
Yeah, from running?
That's correct.
Okay, that's important. Okay. I'd make a motion, uh, maybe look over something, Mr. Chairman, uh, to uh to approve the uh, the repurposes of the uh first floor registry disaster recovery room, currently located at six one four High Street, Dedham, uh, to the, uh, Park Aggie School in Walpole. At the location described, for better or worse, as the lounge is on the second floor of the cap building. Um, and, and, and inconsistent with the diagram provided to us in terms of dimensions and uh access and in terms of other things that go with it, uh, with the stipulation that the uh, the current room does not get switched off until the proposed room is fully operational. All right, condition. Second, I would also, though, incorporate that we also examine, not just going beyond the mo- motion, but we also will keep in mind or examine the Blue House for utilization by the registry and other departments. And it's an underutilized building, maybe there's something we can do there as well. That's my motion.
On the motion, uh, do I have a second?
I, I'm, I'm okay with, I'm okay with the motion except for the Blue House, because that, that's not on the agenda, right? And I don't think that, I don't think the Blue House can be part of the motion. I, I, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that sentiment. We can make the motion next week on the Blue House. But I think the motion excluding the Blue House is accurate.
All right. We don't want to have any.
I agree with him, but I. You can bring anything in you want next week.
Next week. That's fine, that's fine. So I'll amend my motion to, we leave out the part about the Blue House. It's just that we, we will move to repurpose the current Registry of Deeds disaster recovery room, with current location, to the Aggie School at the location described. Whatever the address might be, God help me, I should know it, but uh, in the lizard lounge area.
One hundred Main Street.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. And then, but the stipulation is nothing happens. No transfer done, it's done until that room becomes fully operational and all equipment and so forth is up to, uh, you know, up to what it's supposed to be to switch the switch. That's it.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I'll second that.
Wish you may in second, it all in favor? All right, it is a vote. Repurposing the disaster recovery. Thank you. I'm gonna send him, Bill, a copy of this. On our agenda, Maureen, number eleven, discuss, I'm sorry, number twelve, report from the procurement department for bid openings and contract awards. Good afternoon, Maureen.
Nothing to report this week.
Thirteen, report of the county director.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a reminder, the commissioners have a meeting, uh, the Norfolk County, excuse me, County Commissioners Association on January twenty-eighth in Barnstable, Massachusetts. Uh, I want to remind the commissioners, our RSVP director position will be vacating at the end of February. Uh, the position is currently publicly posted. We've begun to receive resumes. Interviews start tomorrow. Uh, the commissioners are meeting this evening as trustees of the agricultural high school. Uh, we did follow up um with um the legislature regarding their intended plans to carry over or address the pending uh expiration of the Executive Order on Remote Participation. We were told it will be addressed, quote, in an upcoming supplemental bill, end quote. So there is activity. We don't know what it is. Um, if the commissioners recall, I believe this particular update was the second iteration of the remote participation through COVID. They waited until the last minute to do something. I expect the same thing to happen again, so we'll see how that goes. Um, the commissioners, I think I updated you last week, but for your benefit and for any union members that are listening on our, on our Zoom, um, ASME has reached out to the registry and uh county administration to discuss um, the ongoing hiring uh issues associated with union members from the registry. Um, they wanted to have a roundtable to kind of hash out what the differences are. Uh, I spoke with the union president uh this past week. His um intentions were to avoid any such meeting until we get past the next week or so of uh contract negotiations. He didn't want to conflict the two. So we're looking at an early February uh dialogue, date to be determined. I'll, I'll reach out to the union president uh early February to see what works for him. Um, and then lastly, Commissioner, I, I presume you, you, you recall, but we uh, I think we wanted to note the passing of a former county official. And we can do that at the end, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Cronin? Number fourteen, emergency items or topics the chair did not reasonably anticipate.
Oh, wait, if I could.
Go ahead, Commissioner, yes.
So uh, I, I guess it maybe not, well, you did mention it. You mentioned the fact we have a meeting with the county, other county officials. And in their, in preparation for that, there's a pretty long discussion about the formation of a county board.
Yes.
So I didn't know if it's appropriate to talk about it now or later date, but we should at least talk about it.
We, we can bring it up at next week's meeting if you want to put on the agenda.
Just to talk about it a little bit.
Absolutely.
That's all, that'd be good. Okay, that's all. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, very interesting concept.
A lot of dialogue.
Yeah, well, you know, it's good. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'll say.
Thank you. I have no other items, as I said, but uh previously mentioned, uh, I want to note in today's meeting, in closing, that we close this men, meeting in memory of Walter McDonough of Needham Mass, who passed away late in December. Walter was sixty-six years old, graduate of Boston Latin School, Columbia University, and Suffolk Law School. He worked for a number of years in the Secretary of State's office, and then at the termination of his career before he retired, he worked for the, for the county uh in the office of, the then treasurer, uh, Jim Timmeltie as an aide, Treasurer Timmeltie. He left, he worked here in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. So if you can remember Walter, uh, in your thoughts, uh, I'd appreciate it, and uh, I have nothing else except, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Uh, Chairman, I'll move the adjourn at two ten. Second.
Wish you may in second, it all in favor? We're heading to.